Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020. Here at high school auditorium, also conducted remotely or virtually. We can have a roll call, please, Danny.
John Smith.
Here.
Maria Volke.
Here.
Brad Waller. Lizzy Raining.
Here.
Dr. Ashford.
Here.
Ron Verhie.
Here.
Kendra Otten.
Here.
Jeremy Radler.
Here.
Natalie Plank.
Here.
I have the PC too out in there.
Thank you, Danny. All of we could stand face to face. My pleasure. My pleasure. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. That respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working elaboratively to provide our students with safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in the venue.
I don't hear anything out in the house, do you?
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Our next item on our agenda is volleyball.
We're trying to turn it to me, ma'am.
I want to say it's virtually.
Not seeing anyone come up to the microphones. We will go publicly comment at this time then and move to board recognition. First of all, the board tonight would like to recognize Elizabeth Schmidt for placing cross with Division One State Cross Country Meet. She ran a time of 18.50. Way to go, Elizabeth. If you come up for picture to receive your certificate on stage. Next, the board would like to recognize two of our volleyball team members. They would both come up together. Kelly Page, who accomplished a milestone this season by reaching 1,000 career assists on October 20th against the Hortonville Polarairs. She's a three-year starter on varsity and her accomplishments come from setting the ball to a hitter who gets an attack kill. Kelly is also a strong hitter, so for her, breaks this goal is extraordinary.
Rachel Travis, on October 17th against the Wausau West Warriors, reached a career milestone
of 1,000 days. This was the goal of hers, but didn't seem achievable with the uncertainty of being able to finish out the already possibly shortened season. Merrill volleyball coaching staff is extremely proud of these two athletes, who worked very hard in and out of season to be the best players and leaders on the 2020 squad. As you walk up here for the picture, I would like to add this. Coach Crew did send to Dr. Sample and myself a few words. Merrill volleyball coaches are so proud of Rachel and Kelly for reaching their 1,000 career milestones this season. Although it was always a personal goal for both players, we certainly did know we would get enough games in for them to reach it. Rachel finished her high school career with 1,157 digs while Kelly racked up 10, 1,096 career assists. Both players have been positive role models for the underclassmen and represent in Merrill volleyball in our community with dignity and pride. Legacy they will leave behind is that of dedication, hard work throughout three years of playing varsity volleyball. We wish the best for Kelly and Rachel in their future endeavors. That was from Coach Crew. If you come up.
So I just turned it off.
I need to unlock so that I know which one glitched or something.
Yeah, I make this one cheat sheet. This one cut the dock. I'll do that.
The board would like to recognize Sheila Champion, who sits with us virtually.
What changes?
Sheila has been very supportive of the staff. She steps in to help, brainstorm ideas to support all the students. She's a role model for pushing services and exemplary teaching practices and actively builds relationships with all students. Just as well, she has to go along on a classroom school forest trip because she has a number of students she works with and advised if she wanted to build the relationship outside of the services she provides. Thank you, Sheila, for your dedication to our students. Next, and also virtually, the board would like to recognize Kim Home. Kim Home is a role model teacher. Parents have noted her great communication to keep them in the loop on the successes and struggles her children may be having. Kim embraces new ideas and mentors new teachers effectively to help them grow. Her student learning is engaging and achievement soars. Kim is a teacher-students look back on in their education and know that she has had an impact. Thank you and congratulations, Kim. Next, I believe you joined us. Board would like to recognize Steve Holmes. Steve stepped into the Maple Grove custodial position the last few weeks. He's done a great job keeping the school clean in Germ 3. Maple Grove has had zero positive cases and we thank the custodial staff as much as their families for this. We hope he enjoyed his visit at elementary level and thank him for a great job. Steve, if you'd join me up here on the stairs. Next, the board would like to recognize four individuals. Wendy Ann Reesamling, Jenna Brantenburg, and Melissa Schroeder. They've become the unofficial Merrill High School COVID Response Team by encouraging supervision solutions that help Merrill High School stay open each and every day through the pandemic. If the board would join me in this ceremony for a hold all opportunity, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
I'll just say a few words. There's no point in taking people out of school in the pandemic. Unfortunately, Merrill High School, because we have hybrid learning, so when students go on, they're able to jump in live stream and attend school really in the wrong. So the same is true with teachers. We're recording, they broadcast from live stream. We still have a sporadic number of people around here. So this is where these four heroes, it's now happening, they have an asset. Every morning, this is how it goes, Wendy's kind of a puff that has, so we fly over her to be short on a given day, and so she gets her plan going. Obviously, Maria and Jenna are our conference supervisors. She's our, Maria's also our pseudo nurse who we need, and so she can direct her to that. Jenna has covered every office in our building, new quarantine, kids' services, attendance, has got awesome. Melissa's part-time for us, and when we call her to come in early, she somehow, relatively, is there before we take up the phone. And so these guys have kept us, and they get all the credit. So thank you very much.
Thanks again and congratulations to everyone. The board appreciates all your hard work and efforts. Next, I would like to call to the front our student Board of Education representatives for the report, Levi and Amelia. You would step forward.
Although spring sports are done, under sports are just around the corner, and many students are excited for their respective sports to begin. These include boys and girls basketball, hockey, dancing, and wrestling, and many have been practicing for practically their seasons for quite a long time.
So what I believe, speaking to other consultants in the high school, many of them are extremely great.
I hope that it will not happen for some of the students. Unfortunately, this is not the exact case for some of the other schools in our district. Many have had to switch online learning. And while this is not optimal, many students are looking forward to their school reopening, and most of them are excited to be hopefully within the next three weeks. Some good news, many seniors are trying to get their responses for colleges and states that buy in too much, and many have plans for high school graduation, whether it's attending college, staying in the workforce, or enlisting in the military. Many student plans are posted on our district Facebook page, and seniors are encouraged to leave the student services office room so they can celebrate their graduation plans.
The receiving break is approaching fast. Break starts Wednesday, the 25th, and continues through the weekend for the extended day off on Monday. Students are excited to take a break and come back ready after their day school. In speaking of having Mondays off, we have had two Mondays off of school so far, and we have gone over very well in high school. Many students and teachers have adapted quickly to this change and appreciate the break to catch up. Students and teachers alike have found this time to be very beneficial in planning and preparing for the upcoming week. And on a very positive note, high school has seen almost all teachers over previously quarantined or sick return to in-person teaching. Currently, there is only one teacher whose class is on the LDS. Everyone in those classes are very happy to have their teacher back and go back to sign their own.
Thank you, Levi and Amelia. Any questions for student board representatives? All right. Thank you. Next, we'll turn it over to Dr. Sample, our administrative reporter.
Thanks, Kevin. Our first administrative report comes to us from Linda Odenzke, Director of Curriculum Instruction. Her topic summary gives us an overview or review of the SERC program or the school-wide implementation review. We moved from targeted assistance to district-wide or school-wide Title I. So you can see the school-wide requirements, the information she has provided about the model and the guidelines for the school-wide implementation review. Glenn is available, as well as I, and I can answer any questions if you have any questions for either woman as regards to the report. The next administrative report, Joe Seaman, the Director of Pine River School for Young Learners, provided the monthly report at Pine River. You can see the waiting list numbers, the numbers of students attending school, as well as the health screening information and the number of snacks and lunches served for the month of October. Also attached is the P card statement for any charges to, or any purchases attached to Pine River School for Young Learners. Are there any questions from me regarding Joe's report?
Karen Baker, Director of Special Ed and People's Services, her report summarizes our collaboration with area school districts and Aspiris and CISA 9. We have a student in the SERC program as an intern through Aspiris and gaining some great information as on the job training, and she's also provided a link so that you can find out more information about SERC on the WhatsApp Facebook page, the Project SERC WhatsApp Facebook page. Any questions for Karen Baker or myself regarding this program?
I have a question in regards to COVID and COVID numbers. I don't know if now is a good time to ask it in administrative report. I don't see it being on again anywhere else.
Certainly.
The question I have is, I was wondering if we could get walked through a little bit of education on the methodology, the numbers part of COVID management. Considering that the majority of our schools are now closed and it's for a period of time longer than two weeks, how does that look on the last day we know who's all under quarantine? But then two weeks in, how do we know who remains? And then the theoretical idea that a whole school is under quarantine for two weeks, all schools should be out of quarantine in two weeks. How does it look, how do we actually ascertain numbers in order to insert that into the algorithm that we talked about at the beginning?
And we've been getting numbers, and I know Karen updates us. We've been meeting lately, twice a week, to get our numbers out of Lincoln County Health Department. What it really does come down to is the number of staff who were posted with the building principals, the number of staff that may return, and the number of staff that are quarantined. And it got to a point with our three in-town elementaries as well as our middle school that we were stretched so thin, we just did not have the numbers to provide supervision. Now, taken into account, we, those staff that are quarantined does not mean that they are not working, so they're working virtually. But if they're working virtually from home and they've got a classroom of students and physical attendance, we need somebody to supervise. So we've had music, art, via teachers, our instructional aides have provided supervision as well as teachers kind of double dipping with two different classes to provide supervision in those areas. Karen, is there anything regarding numbers that, I know we provide the board with numbers as soon as the update comes out from Lincoln County with Chris Shelley Herschel?
And I guess in regards to the numbers, it's more of the logic behind it. On a Tuesday, we might get a response that says 50% of the teachers are out and 50% of students are out and we ought to shut down. How do we know then 10 days from that point in time, 99% of them are all sitting at home fine, not quarantined, not positive? You could come back, but the buildings will close. Because I think what a lot of people are interested in is we have December 1 reopen dates. So public is looking forward to December 1 reopen dates, but they're also concerned that that will get pushed off till the next semester or post-Christmas. But I see their logic, they're saying, everyone is at home quarantined. After two weeks, shouldn't everyone be in the third return? If that's not true, then just kind of work us through why that's not true and how we get the actual factual numbers to say that there's not enough teachers, there's not enough students, when they're all at home, they're not present.
What I can speak to is what we receive in Lincoln County, and that is any positive case that comes for, and that positive is either a staff or student. From identification, then there is contact tracing now to identify anybody that may have been exposed to that particular staff or student. With that exposure, it can be a student or it could be a staff. So there might be a situation where you have a staff who is positive, you have X number of students who are then exposed, as well as X number of staff. The county then determines when these students or staff person can come back, and those numbers change. The other interesting piece to this is you make out a staff or student who's quarantined, and they're not positive, but within a quarantine period, let's say they're quarantined for two weeks, then they become positive, which adds on time to their extended quarantine. The other piece to that is not only the staffing students that we are working to from the county, but people who are in the homes, who might be a spouse, might be a student who have been exposed and they're positive, and therefore that staff or student in the home also has to quarantine.
I understand what you're talking about, John. You've got, it would make sense on numbers and on paper that if you had, let's say even just 100% of the staff were quarantined, then you would guess that 100% of those staff would be coming back at the end of that quarantine period. We talked about that too. We've got some overlap there because you may have staff that are at home quarantined, not testing positive, but they're quarantined because of close contact, because of contact tracing. So they're going to stay home, they're going to get tested as soon as they can, you have to wait for the test results to come back. Test results come back, okay, they're able to come to work, and now they do test positive. So now that not only affects that staff person, but everybody in their household, that everybody is now on quarantine for an extended period of time. So I always like to provide a date as an anticipated date, a potential date of return so that parents don't think it's indefinitely. Unfortunately, providing that date of return didn't work so well for Jefferson Elementary because we've had to push it back twice, one week each time. And those are the numbers, well, we look at the board of all the numbers, but those are the numbers that as much as I really wanted to hold true to their initial comeback timing, I know when we looked at the numbers and had conversations with Heather and the way the numbers continued to increase, we just didn't have the supervision because of those overlapping quarantines. Whether it be positive case, which in some ways we know when the return date is on a positive case, on a positive test date. What we don't know is what's interfering with that positive case versus contact tracing, and then a person towards the end of that contact tracing period becomes positive, extending their time on.
I guess that's a little bit of a basic question, and it's, when you look at, say the high school, and it has ins and outs, you know, the report from the students and every one teacher that's on right now, that's as a report. Because people come in, and then they come out, and then they come back in, when we shut the school down, when do we know that we're fine to be open? I mean, what is the actual data point that says, yeah, there's plenty of kids now that could come in? They would know that live in the morning when they opened up the high school, and I know we have online learning, so that people are checking in, but I don't necessarily know. I guess the point is, do they report that they're ineligible for, you know, independent learning, or, see, what I'm driving at is like, the in and out work well in the beginning, but once we shut the school down, they're just all out. How do we know that they're not ready to come back in? And is that just solely from the county saying, you had 135 kids in the building, right now 70 of them are still under quarantine, and they tell us that they're in trouble to his or?
Waiting list of one students and staff who are in the east room quarantine, and hopefully that that list is updated, but due to the number of cases, it's not always timely. I think the biggest question was not our students, it's the amount of staff. And what we have found in some cases in some of the buildings, that went trickle-down effect, where, you know, multiple people, and I'll take Jefferson as an example, were exposed and they entered and left. Now they're positive, now they're positive. And what I'm seeing anodally as an observer, is that when a person is exposed, they're not testing positive immediately, but they're really testing positive those symptoms are towards the end of that quarantine. But it really boils down to if there are enough staff to supervise. And then if there are pieces, if there aren't enough staff to supervise, it's been able to provide safety for all students.
Just really quick, two things that Karen and I have been working on that list that she's referring to, the counties have also thrown a caution, so it wasn't originally the case that when someone got sick, that they'd say, okay, your 14 days starts at the end of the other person's full recovery. But apparently the counties are doing that, probably about a month and a half ago, I think the first county that had shared that they were doing that with me was Rainland. And now it is the case, for example, that Lincoln's doing that, as well as other surrounding counties. And so that has added to people's timeout when their quarantine gets lengthened by whatever county they have people with them. So that's another piece in the puzzle. We've also had, as you've told, building, we've also had member of staff who's needed to do remote because they're also watching kids who are in other buildings. And so that's.
Thanks for all the feedback.
On that question, follow by Brett. Ron, Brett.
Just have a quick question. You don't quarantine, correct? That's the health department.
The names of the positives that we contact trace, and yes, the health department does all of that, we are following the orders and direction of the health department.
And they tell you, okay, this person is ready to come off, is cleared to come back to school, or a teacher, or whatever, and you cross them off the list, right? Is that, so it's a running?
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Brett. What's the, maybe? So like you said, exposure, so if we have a positive case, a positive staff member, I'm going to just use, you had one positive staff member at the middle school, two got sent out, two other staff members got sent out, I would assume because of exposure. What's the definition of exposure?
Thank you. Definition of exposure is being within six feet of another person for 15 minutes or greater, and that's a cumulative amount of time, not just 15 minutes during one. Not saying that, okay, I was only there six minutes first hour, or in the first hour, and I was there six minutes the next and so forth, but it's throughout the day if it's greater than 15 minutes.
Thank you, Brett. Any other questions at this time? David, go ahead.
I mean, as of where we sit right now, are we potentially going to be moving back the date of return for the other schools that are closed, or are we going to aim at that December 2nd, December 1st date of return? Or are we going to aim at that December 2nd, December 1st date of return?
As of right now, it's the December 1st date. We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, a mitigation meeting. We're going to look at those numbers again. If we have the change, I want to give parents enough advance notice as possible, but as of right now at this moment, we are set to return on December 1st.
That's something tomorrow goes.
Tomorrow or the next day or after? Right before Thanksgiving or right after Thanksgiving? Yeah, I know that Karen's been looking at those numbers just as soon as they come out. I had a meeting myself with the superintendent in Talahawk, Terry Reynolds, echo meetings last Friday, and we joined Shelley and Shelley stays in constant communication with both districts through Karen Baker. And the only day that the health department's taking off is Thanksgiving. So if numbers come out on Friday, we'll get them on Friday.
Thanks. The other thing where, thank you. The other thing where we'd like to add just a follow-up is what Dr. Sample said. And that is true, that the health department works seven days a week 24/7, and we need to know that the district also works seven days a week 24/7, because as soon as a case comes through, they don't wait for Monday morning or during the week, but things are processed throughout the weekend as well. So it is a very daunting task. Our staff has worked very hard, our administrators have worked very hard to keep people safe. And this is the hand that we're dealt, and we do the best that we can, and we look at numbers on a daily basis, and we look at, again, not only what we know in our staff, but also the staff and students that are impacted because of outside influences such as what their own family environment is at that time.
Another question?
All right. Thank you, Karen. Dr. Sample, back to your administrative reports.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Eddie. The Brian Dasher's monthly status reports, monthly budget update is attached. If you have any questions for myself or Brian Dasher, we'd be happy to answer those. The food participation update has also been made available by Brian, Doctor Food Service for the months of September and October. Any questions regarding our participation report for food service? Human Resources Director Eddie Ben has provided his monthly update, an update on the recent meeting with the Employee Benefits Group. Also, the expiration of Families First Coronavirus Response Act components that is set to expire at the end of December. He's staying very close to this situation because it's going to get a little bit tricky if that were to expire, and especially with a new president coming in, so he's going to carefully monitor that. And the third portion of his report is the wage increases or the thawing of the salary freeze. Those were approved in October and they will take effect at the end of November with the retroactive payback set to be paid on December 15. Are there any questions for myself or Eddie regarding his monthly HR directory report? My superintendent's report has the dates of activities and meetings that I attended. The one-holded event is the, I had the privilege of assisting at the VFW as a judge for the Voice of Democracy and the Patriots Pen contest. It gives you information regarding the Patriots Pen, which is open to all middle school students, as well as the Voice of Democracy, which is an audio essay competition for students in grade nine through 12, as well as their teams. And so those names have already been announced, we'll be recognizing them in a future board meeting. You can see that we had three students placed in the Patriots Pen from Kirby River Middle School, fifth place, sixth place, and 10th place. And then for our Voice of Democracy high school students, we took second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh place. And you can see the names, ages, and grade levels of those students that participated in that. And we're very appreciative to the VFW for this contest as there are cash awards and scholarships given. I finished the first quarter of administrative rounding, the rounding process, and so I'll be getting the second quarter here shortly. You can see the progress I've made with administrative evaluations. I've been able to meet with everybody, I evaluated for the initial conference, and now I'm starting with the informal observations. Building staff visibility or building visibility somewhat limited, but I was able to visit the four buildings that remain open, and I listed the time dates there. The alt-meeting agenda will be available at our next meeting, as we just recently met. And then you can see our central office administrative meeting agenda, as well as the weekly bulletins that all staff get at the end of each week. We'll continue to provide those as well. Are there any questions about any of my activities or meetings or events?
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda, we will review our committee reports. First up would be the Finance Human Resources Committee. We have attached the draft minutes for the November 4, 2020 committee meeting. John Smith and the rest of the Finance HR Committee are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening?
Go ahead, you can call something out. Pay attention to the board. Kind of a softer topic is the financial reporting that we've been receiving over the years. It's highlighted in the minutes, but Brian Dasher's going to take a look at things like food participation, volunteers 5,000 to 999, the running tools report, and instead of having maybe a lot of these historic financial reports provided to us, take another shot at what would look like an optimal financial director report to the board. So there's a lot of pieces that we're used to. If you have any feedback, really myself or Brian, I'm sure we'll be provided.
Thank you, John. Hearing no other questions, you think to point out for Finance HR, let's move on to the Facilities Committee. There was attached draft minutes from November 4 committee meeting. Myself as chair and other members of that committee are available for questions. Any questions for our Facilities Committee this evening? Hearing none, our next committee report was for CTP, Curriculum, Technology, and People's Services Committee, and the draft minutes from the November 11, 2020 committee meeting are shared. Maria Volpe, Chair, and other members of the committee are available for questions. Anyone have any questions for our members of the CTP committee this evening? All right, thank you. That concludes our committee reports section. Next, we have on the agenda unfinished business. Currently, we do not have anything table that we would bring up outside of new board business, which we will get to now. First, I have on the Department of Education business is the approval of MAPS 4K dispersment adjustment with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I approve the MAPS 4K dispersment increase for 2020, 2021 school year from $2,200 to $2,268.
Thank you, John. We have a motion to be upheld second. Second by Ron, and an additional third by Jeremy. Sorry for the lapse there, Mr. Rattler. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next on our agenda is the administrative contracts with the attached topic summary sheet and the proposed administrative contract template provided by our Director of Human Resources, Eddie Ben. The recommended motion for Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
Finance HR Committee recommended the board to approve the revised administrative contracts for the 2021 to 2023 contract cycle.
Motion right now, so we have a second. Second by Ron. It's important to ask if anyone has any questions or discussion. If I see Eddie step to the microphone, if there's some highlights you would like to make, I'll turn it to you first. Maybe that'll answer any questions that the board members have. Go ahead, Eddie.
I just had to change an email. There was a typo on, not typo, sorry, there was, I just did not remember to send the updated discussion pieces from HR Finance to Tammy. So the original one that was out there at the first HR Finance meeting was out there. So I can walk you through the five changes that we made at committee in the second revision, or you can save it to my spot if I come through either one, we have plenty of time. I used to watch it, I would look at the one that is currently posted, that was the final of my apologies.
Go ahead, John.
Since there's a motion on the board, you want to just go through, walk through the five, and then the votes to determine whether or not we proceed?
Let's see, that would be appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Eddie?
Thank you. That's my apologies for the error. So the five changes are, real quick, we made the main change to what is called the Dutch Paws language into that arbitrary bridge standard, which essentially adds that flexibility for how they manage the contract. And we got language from Mr. Delbit, Morgan Clark, to reflect all the flexibility that the committee talked about, and kind of that transition from the old standard to the new. So it'll give you guys the flexibility with regard to major financial occasions like a failed referendum, for example, if we're in the middle of a two-year contract cycle, you'd be able to cease the contract midterm. Okay? So that was one of the major changes. Now, we include some of the benefit language. We talked about separating it from teachers, so that there's not a connection to say, well, you know, it'll always be at least the teachers get or something of that nature. We just separated them, and what'll happen in the future is they'll just be annual reports on the percentage of contribution towards the various insurance plans. The other one here is the merit pay piece. It got brought back up and was discussed, and in the end it was just removed the contract, so it no longer exists. The term retirement is defined at this point, and we just defined it as age 55 and having five consecutive years of service. Previously, it just said retirement, there are actually parameters for all that time, so now we're understanding and a common knowledge of what that is. And the last thing that we put in at the Finance Committee meeting was just some clarification to determine the effective start date for when those liquidated damages would take effect, from basically when one contract rolls over into the next. And it wasn't previously very clear in statute funding as March 31st. In discussion with the committee, we were having some discussion while pushing it out to either June 1st or June 15th, depending on if it is a 216 year-round administrator or if it is someone who is less than 260 days, meaning they're typically a school year per administrator, because if they were to give us notice on June 15th, we would still have more than two months, perhaps two and a half months prior to students showing up, to be able to recruit and apply the candidate for that position. So those are the main five things that were not listed in the topic summary sheet in that system.
And for the bottom of the board, the five things were discussed at committee level, and then we approved administrative contract to forward to the board with them five edits, which you did not see was those five edits in the attached topic summary sheet, but our motion was made at committee based on the information Eddie just gave.
Correct. With hearing that, everybody, I would ask if Nubs and Ron are finding the motion as stated? Not knowing that, does any other board members have any additional questions to follow up, not knowing and having this corrected, updated? Ron, go ahead. I would check my second, just to make sure that that is in there, that it's always in right in that motion. Okay, then I'll second. So we still have a motion by Nubs and second by Ron to approve the revised administrative contracts for the 2021, 2023 contract cycle through our discussion and updates from the Finance HR Committee as recommended and updated through an email from Eddie Ben this evening. Hearing any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, go ahead.
I haven't discussed that HR Finance, you guys don't make a decision. However, the typo should have been given to us prior to this meeting tonight, because most of us do go ahead and go read those things over, and it wasn't accurate. My husband's given us a chance to, because not everybody's able to make those committee meetings, you know? But that might just have those changes prior to just last minute.
I apologize because I just said that the agenda is in form, it's just, as it said in the campaign.
There's many eyes on that. I may need to take part of that, because there is something that I do, Dr. Sample and I, I do approve the agenda, we do look through things, members of that committee do look through things. I did not catch that, so I apologize as well, or I would have asked Eddie. Eddie, go ahead.
While the topic summary sheet is not updated, that administrative contract, I believe that was attached and that is the one that you need. I was just making sure, because I thought maybe something changed on prior to that meeting, so I didn't want to put it up.
It wasn't compared to what we have in the email that we just got at time 47.
The topic summary sheet, I think, is different, but in your notes, you see you may have administrative contracts in place. I'm pretty sure that they want that key to the email to.
No, it's, because the liquidated damages piece has a part E and part F, which talk about all of the different types of administrators could be prior to the new liquidated damages date effect. Eddie, if you were to walk through the chapters.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to read it all over without, and not listening to what you're talking about and trying to read over the update that you sent me. Didn't really share this in anything, so, but it's okay, thank you.
I can assure you that it's the same information that was present at the Finance HR Committee, that you were in attendance, so you did see the intact information.
I know, I'm just talking about the other fellow board members that may not have attended that that committee meeting. If somebody wanted to read on it, we should have had it prior to now. And I'm okay, I'm okay with going ahead and looking at it, I just, if I wasn't attending, I definitely would have wanted to table this first next one's meeting, so that I had a chance to read through it.
And anyone who was not in attendance has the ability to make that recommendation right now?
Right.
After hearing that, at this time, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up on our agenda is the new BVA, Bridges Virtual Academy Staff Position Approval, BVA Assistant Support Specialist, BVA Secondary Program Coordinator with an attached topic summary sheet from John Higmeister, and a recommended. from John Higemeister, and a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Tom?
Recommended motion to approve the BVA System Support Specialist position and adjust the BVA Secondary Program Coordinator to an administrative position, full-time, 220-paid contract, by eliminating the BVA Digital Library and position.
Motion by John, seconded by Maria. Before I ask for questions or discussions, Mr. Higemeister, anything you'd like to add? I saw you come up to the microphone.
I just came up to answer any questions. At the last meeting in our closed session when we talked about the administrative position that we currently have in addition line, I had mentioned that there may be some other things that we're looking at to support our enrollment, because we have gone up about 35% of this year. We were kind of at the tipping point for an additional support role in the office in addition to an additional administrative type position, and that's what these are, so.
Alright, thank you Mr. Higemeister. Anyone have any questions or discussion on the motion or the topic as provided? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any extensions? Motion carries on the voice call. Next item on our agenda is the approval of 4K contracts for 2021 to 2022 with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman, and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
Recommended motion to approve the mass 4K contracts for 2021-2022 school year.
Motion by Brett, second by Ron. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries on the voice call. Our next item on our agenda is the diesel and gas credits with the attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman, and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
Recommended motion to approve field purchases for transportation to be purchased from Sanex, Smash, River, County Pool, and Orbine Reggamo.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any extensions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Merrill High School paging and clock upgrade with a topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman, and a recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the quote for systems technologies to provide an upgraded paging system and synchronized clock system for Merrill High School.
Motion by Ron, we have a second by Brett. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries on the voice call. Next item on our agenda is the Lincoln County Health Department, MOU, memorandum of condition standing related to the contract tracing with the topic summary sheet from Karen Baker. This was informational only. I think we've gone through a lot of the contract, contact tracing questions. Dr. Sample, was there anything you'd like to highlight on that? I think it was pretty self-explanatory, but give you the opportunity if there was anything you'd like to highlight on Karen's information.
No, really nothing to add to Karen's topic summary sheet. Pretty self-explanatory.
Would you agree? I just thought I would give you that opportunity. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be the Park City Credit Union donation. It was attached in our board packet, donation form and information from Keshan Ashik regarding the donation of funds from Park City Credit Union valued at $2,500 for hotspots for students during our virtual learning time. Due to the fact that the donation is at or above the $2,500 limit set in policy 7230, this donation must go to the board separately for approval, and there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion? Kendra?
Recommended motion to approve the donation of funds from Park City Credit Union valued at $2,500 for a hotspot for students during virtual learning.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
I'll second. Thank you.
Second by Jeremy. Do we have any question or discussion on that motion or topic? Certainly like to thank our community partners when we do these projects together. Probably beating Maria to the bunch on that. Does that covers that all for us? Maria, thank you for in the past always sharing that. That is definitely the case. We appreciate our teamwork with community partners such as Park City Credit Union. Not hearing any other questions or discussions, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any extensions? Motion carries. Next item is the Master Facilities Plan, and we keep this as a standing agenda item. I will turn the cylinder to Dr. Sample for any updates, highlights, and things as we go into our recommendation. Would you like that done? Motion first.
Well, I think there's a couple of points to explain. We did provide the, we summarized the three ADPOC committee meetings looking at the, from a facilities perspective, regarding which grades to put at which schools for Washington and Cape Cod Ridge. And so throughout the series of those three meetings, we indicated the pros and cons of each site, and it should also be noted that the CTP Committee with Linda and Karen had also surveyed staff from an academic's perspective to weigh in on the facilities as well. And they also conferred with the motion that we have since that time. Also, Brian Dasher has added the ADPOC calendar timeline. We combined that into one budget development calendar to make it easy, so the budget development calendar not only has the budget timeline, but it also includes everything that we had on our ADPOC, as well as future referendum planning, so it's all in one location. So that's really all I have to update the board on since the first time, the last time that this topic summary went to committee level.
Alright, thank you for the update, Dr. Sample. Thank you, Brian Dasher, for the updates on the timeline. It is excellent to have that data in one place. I think board members would agree, as we're making decisions and need to see when those things are coming up on the calendar and how to work through those. So thank you for your efforts on that, Mr. Dasher. At this time, I would entertain the motion as provided. Kendra?
I motion the approval of the assignments of the grades as depicted in the topic summary sheet, assigning grades K to two to Cape Cod Ridge Elementary School, grades three and four to Washington Elementary School, and grades five to eight to Prairie River Middle School, beginning at the start of the 2021 to 2022 school year.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
Aye.
Second by Maria. Any questions or discussion on that motion? John?
Included in some of the packet information was a dollar amount of $787,106, and then there was a grid that provided class sizes and sections. I just wanted to make sure that by approving this step, are we approving also kind of that dollar amount, the class size amount, that unit amount?
Unless the class sizes were to change, that's correct. The way the class sizes are right now would be expected in whole account for next year, if that remains accurate, which combines projections as well as all, everything that we received from this last third variety count, understanding that kindergarten is always a question, but based on that, that is the projected, we have a figure of that.
Thank you.
Think other things that we've talked about at a committee level would be knowing that we are in behind in enrollment, that would be a factor. However, not knowing post-pandemic what that will look like in the future if some students from Merrill A. Public School District that are attending pure virtual will come back into our classrooms and how that will affect, and we will continue to monitor that.
Eddie, may I say something?
Go ahead Maria.
Just wanted to add, I think John's question goes to projections that we don't know yet, so I think it's important to know that, or to understand that section sizes would be determined based on what the projected numbers are, or what the acting numbers, I should say, as of next year. So I don't know that we can really determine that at this moment. And correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct, it would fluctuate based on enrollment. But like I said, the actual, the running's projected versus this year's actual minus kindergarten was fairly accurate, very closely will be an expectation.
Right, I just want to get locked into a number going for not exactly certain what the numbers are.
Other volume?
I guess, maybe she was referring to Dr. Sample. But my point with the numbers is that when we say that the class size is going to be 25, 30, 20, and 18, and then we extrapolate out the sections needed, that's the premise of the $787,000 proposal. So we can't change that premise after we pass the motion to a smaller class size, because it will affect the actual savings that's leading to the decision that we're looking at. So I just wanted to substantiate that that is in fact our intentions, understanding that it could be 22 or 24, but that's the standard that's going to be used.
Correct, and it's always been our goal to get as close as we possibly can to the smarter spending with AUGEN's framework, and so that's, those are the numbers that we're showing. Correct.
Thank you. Kendra?
I know that we discussed this throughout the entire process, but just making sure that if whatever decision is made, that the public is, because I receive a lot of emails from people or comments from people that weren't aware that this was coming through, so I just feel like just making sure. I know we do a lot to let people know, but I think the more that we can do, once a decision is made, the better.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any extensions? Motion carries unanimously on the voice call. This time, we're headed toward the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I would ask if anyone would like to pull anything from tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion on the consent agenda please. Kendra?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which includes minutes of the October 28th, 2020, and November 4th, 2020 meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $4,181,426.58. Personal report as presented, and donations totaling $600.
Question by Kendra, do we have a second? Seconded by Brett. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any extensions? Ron?
Stayed for the October 20th minutes.
Ron, any other extensions?
I have seen the report in the post question of October 28th.
Thank you Maria. Motion carries, as noted with the couple of extensions. Items for future meetings, as everyone is aware, if you want to add something added onto our committee agendas, feel free to contact our committee chairs, either via email or mention something as you are attending those meetings. If you have any questions or topics for future board meetings, get in touch with myself or Dr. Sample, and we will go through that process of adding those on there. Does anyone have anything this evening that they do not have time to, or email, if they would like to go through the process of putting on their future committee or board agenda? Alright. Next item on the agenda is the board decision financial impact summary, and as John Smith had talked about before, Brian Dasher is working on some reporting. Not only that will affect some board agenda items and administrative reports on the finance side for the district, this will also be added in this capacity. And I think it will, as we get all the input from Brian and Finance HR Committee and any other board members, I think this will be brought more up to date and user-friendly and visual, and answer a lot of the questions that people are asking to pull from data that Brian has provided, and much more lengthy reports. So I'm excited, and thanks again, Brian, for that work. Next would be a reminder of our radio schedule. Tomorrow morning, Dr. Sample and I, 8:15 in the morning, will be on Buji 730 radio, highlighting tonight's board meeting and events in the district. Future meetings, we have a special facilities committee meeting on Wednesday, December 2nd at 3:30 PM in the boardroom, followed by the Finance HR Committee meeting that evening, Wednesday, December 2nd at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Head Start Policy Council will be meeting next on Tuesday, December 8th at 5:30 PM virtually. The CTP or Curriculum and Technology Pupils Services Committee meeting will be on Wednesday, December 9th at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board Meeting will be held on Monday, December 14th at 6:00 PM, which is held virtually. Our next regular board meeting will be here in the high school auditorium, Wednesday, December 16th, beginning at 5:30 PM. You'll also have an option to attend virtually or remotely. Next, we have a contemplated motion to return to executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Ren 1, Ren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee or coach, the governmental body, as jurisdiction or exercises responsibility for NF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, or out-specific persons preliminary consideration of. or out-specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where REN B applies, which if discussed in part, will likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to and such histories or data are involved in such problems or investigation. The purpose of tonight's closed session is to consider employees' requests for full or partial remote work during a FMLA or Family Medical Leave Act leave. Do we have that motion this evening? Ron? Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Linda. Do we have a roll call? Please stand.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Pretty bulky. Um, Brad Fowler?
Aye.
Wendy Gilling? Um, Beth Dastre?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kendra Austin? Um, Jeremy Rattler?
Aye. 6:41. We will allow five minutes to get to our closed session location. And we will reconvene as necessary into open session for any actions required. Thank you.
So like, what is going to be doing in that situation?
I, I wait on closed session.
You want to know that most things because you're saying something. And you want to know something there.
Yeah. Absolutely. She just said something. She was like, yeah, she left her thing like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the girl who killed. Has something like that.
If I ever see a. No, I was just curious. Now that closed session, because in closed session, none of this information is communicated for months to.
Right. Yeah, they actually jump on it and they don't use the same.
I see.
I think Jeff wants to say something else.
Sure.
Reconvening into open session, I would ask board members if we have any motions. Ron?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the remote work and FMLA leave arrangement for Heather Klemm, I believe, through December 11th, 2020.
Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any extensions? Do we have any other motion in this? Motion by John Smith to adjourn at 7:03 PM. Do we have a second? Second by.
Second.
And a third and a fourth. All those in favor to adjourn at 7:03 PM signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, everyone, for your attendance this evening for a regular board education meeting.
Thank you, Evan.